Mrs. Kryling?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
We have a-
Okay, I am- Reece Marcusson is traveling today, so I will attempt to fill in for Reece and help the meeting run as smoothly as possible. So I'm happy to be here tonight after what I thought was the first positive first month to the full month of the school year for the staff, the administration, even the community. It seemed like September was a very good year for all of us. Now with one month under our belts, I think it's time to get in- to continue to get in the groove and keep working to accomplish tangible gains now. I think it's fortuitous that right after I'm speaking to everybody here that we have Mike talking about how he heard a concerned group of neighbors and community members and how he, Jen, and the entire staff got together and achieved good work in rapid fashion that I think is a great example of the strong executionally minded work we want to accomplish as a team in support of the administration and the staff. So we make sure that all you guys in high school and all the students have what continues to be an awesome experience, but we do so being responsible and concerned to our community. It's that kind of executionally mindedness and spirit of cooperation and achievement that has had the board recently looking at how we operate together and even extending this look at how we work into our shared service partners in District 67. It's our goal to become maximally efficient and more supportive of the community, students, teachers, the administration. The conversations that we're having both as our own board District 115 and with District 67 and obviously with the administration, those are occurring now and I think as the months move along, we expect that what is an already strong position will continue to be strengthened and we continue to boost what we consider to be best-in-class educational environments for the students and the teachers. But also, we want to become stronger communicators and we want to be increasingly efficient recipients of the taxpayers' support and the community's interest. Basically, we are very fortunate today to be sitting here talking to you in what is another strong position, a strong month where District 115 Lake Forest High School is leading the way, in my opinion, and I think there's some bad support for the nation. But the fact is, we are even more happy to engage and work towards becoming even stronger and increasingly better environment with every month. So with that, that concludes my guest. (laughing). To you, superintendent- oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Lane, and I'll hand off to begin to Dr. Holland.
And I'm going to pass it to Chris and Drew who will give the student update.
Good evening, everybody. We want to just share some things that are going on in our school right now. On the student council side of things, homecoming went really well and the dance was really- had a really big turnout. The cookout had great weather and there were a bunch of families and faculty that showed up. We are donating our extra homecoming T-shirts for Hurricane Relief in Houston and we actually made extra money which is being donated to the Pine Shadows Elementary School in Houston. We're going to go as student council and we're going to shop for basic needs that they might need for school and for home. An LFHS student is actually a teacher at that school, so we thought it would be very impactful not only to help those in the area that were affected by it, but also to connect with somebody who ties back to our own community. And the neighborhood is one of the less fortunate, so many of the households were greatly impacted by the hurricane, so we thought by choosing this school, it would actually make a really big impact. We're also thinking about new possible fundraisers for the future and planning ahead for the next dance.
One of those fundraisers might be our car wash we might bring back this year. We still have to figure out our planning for that. And another thing student council is trying to get done is in the upper commons, we're having some connectivity problems and especially since where that's where all the seniors have their study hall. We're working with the tech desk right now to get another wireless adapter in there to- so everyone can-
We know a guy.
-do their homework.[331.62][331.62](laughing). Well, I talked to Mr. Perry. And the fall play is coming up. It's called You Can't Take It With You, and it will be at the high school Thursday through Saturday in the RMA at seven o'clock.
The citrus fundraiser to support the music department began on October 3rd and it lasts for a month. It's an annual fundraiser that sells citrus where this year's profits help support the LFHS choirs and our musical tour of Italy. We will be performing at the Vatican and on the Amalfi Coast this spring break in 2018. And there's also a choir concert next Tuesday in the RMA. And the following week, there is a workshop with the Lake Bluff Middle School and Deerpath Middle School as well.
A Chinese exchange program happened last week. Fourteen students and two teachers from Shanghai came and visited our school. And later in the year, LFHS students will be heading over to China.
Many of the seniors right now are working on college apps and trying to fit all their deadlines, which is November 1st for many schools for early action. And there is a FAFSA workshop tomorrow morning at the school with students and their parents.
Exciting, there's a new media trip to Los Angeles this weekend where they did lots of workshops and things to work on their like video making skills and media presentations. So they're all enjoying that very much right now.
A few weeks ago, the second round of cum laude members were announced and tomorrow juniors will be taking the PSAT at our school.
Quick sports update, golf is on to the state tournament this weekend and Friday's senior night for football.
Wow.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. After a hectic start to the school year, but a great one, it seems like everyone in the building seemed to appreciate our long weekend. I know I did. As mentioned, tomorrow we have- we are administering the PSAT to all juniors and sophomores who requested to take the assessment. The PSAT is a practice SAT for all juniors and sophomores, as I mentioned, upon request, and the assessment is used by the National Merit Program and other scholarship agencies. The assessment will take place in the fieldhouse from 8:00 AM to 12:45 and students will be released right after for lunch. We also have a PSAT 8-9 that's being given to all of our incoming freshmen for next year, and that will take place two weekends here at West Campus, October 21st and October 28th. That assessment supports our work around our growth model. We now have a structure in place where we are examining student growth from eighth grade through 12th grade to get a sense of whether students are growing during our time at Lake Forest High School. I do want to mention that sometimes conversations and a lot of discussions around assessments tend to shadow a lot of the great work that we're doing. Assessments are a snapshot of a student at a point in time. In no way do we believe that that totally defines who our students are. We look at assessments as one point of data in relationship to a lot of other quantitative and qualitative data to provide a more holistic picture of who our students are. And so I know sometimes there's a lot of anxiety around assessments, but I want to overemphasize that we recognize that everything has to be looked at in relationship to all the multiple experiences that our students have, and we really try to partner with families and students around making- not making judgments, but determining the next step for each student because this is an individual conversation. And so we have those assessments coming up, but there is a bigger picture that sometimes gets lost in these conversations. During the week of October 30th through November 3rd, we have an altered schedule. Monday through Wednesday, we have all scout days and Thursday is parent-teacher conferences and there's no school on Friday, November 3rd. If anyone is unable to attend conferences, but they still want to touch base with their students' teachers, please reach out to your students' teachers through email or give them a call and they will set up time to touch base with you. On November 2nd and 3rd, we have our open doors program. It's been a district priority to make sure that all students have experienced shadowing professionals in different careers. We have mentoring and we also have internship opportunities. The open doors program is the launch of that work for the school year and it takes place on November 2nd and 3rd, and we have the program in collaboration with APT. Our executive functions tutoring rolled out this year, a couple of weeks after school started, and it's been very well received by parents, students, and staff. I receive a lot of funny emails from parents, but they are greatly appreciative of this work and our tutors are having a great time building relationships with students across the building who they might not have in their classes. But of course, one more touch point for all of our kids who build relationships with one more adult makes the school a lot smaller for many of our kids. And so I want to continue to invite everyone to- who wants this type of support to drop in for support. We have it Monday, Tuesdays, and Fridays before school, and we have it every day after school. In partnership with the Lake Forest American Legion, we are honoring our veterans on November 10th. Information's on our website, but this year we formed a committee that includes community members, faculty, staff, admin, and we're excited to have our students serve as emcees for the program. We have a panel of veterans and we have student presentations. We have music from our band and choir, and the program will take place in the RMA during sixth period, which is 12:55 to 1:40, and this is an event that's open to the entire school community. And so we are encouraging our students to attend with their classes, but we also open our doors to the entire community. Lake Bluff American Legion, just in case anyone's wondering, they participate in District 65's celebration, but we- our celebration happens later in the day and typically members of the Lake Forest and Lake Bluff American Legion participate. So backed by popular demand and with the support of Lake Forest Foundation, we are hosting a parent presentation focused on executive functions in a teenage brain that will take place on Monday, November 20th in the RMA. And this is the first of two presentations that we're going to have conducted and facilitated by Rush Neurobehavioral Center. Last year, this boardroom was packed and it was standing room only, so this year we're going to host it in the RMA. This too is open to the entire school community. Last year, we had a lot of teachers and parents from Lake Forest High School, of course, District 67, 65, St. Mary's, Country Day. It really was a community event and local organizations that work with our students were also represented in the crowd. The second- during second semester, we plan on having a second parent presentation that will focus more on supporting students and the importance of adults also adopting a growth mindset. Both presentations, as I mentioned, will be facilitated by Rush and they're very much in line with the topic of how to raise an adult. And so I'm excited that we have three different experiences that will be offered that really speak to a common theme of different ways of supporting our students from whatever vantage point we are working with them from. And as mentioned, our fall play kicks off this weekend, You Can't Take It With You. That's- it starts Thursday in the RMA and we're encouraging everyone to grab a ticket and enjoy the show. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holland, and-
Can I ask a quick question of Dr. Holland? If I wanted to attend a parent-teacher conference, not that my child necessarily wants me to, but if I wanted to, is that already opened or not?
That information is going to go out to parents within- what's today? Within the next week or so?
Do we have a custody?
No, you haven't.
And I have one-
The presentation from the Rush, I missed the date.
That's November 20th, so you still have time to prepare. It's on a Monday. We are rolling out some professional development for teachers a couple of weeks before, and this is- we'll have that- this on Monday, November 20th in the RMA.
Oh, I've been meaning to ask, who are the executive function tutors?
They are members of our faculty and staff who have participated in Rush's professional development over the past couple of years.
Are they enjoying it?
They are. It's so funny, they have stories too. I walked up there one day and if you think about these two tables combined, a student had all of their work totally laid out, organized in piles, tabs, binders out, and they were talking about- and the planner was open to determine a way to make sure that everything was accounted for, everything was done, and they were talking about emailing the teachers to figure out when some of the other work could get done. But they're enjoying it. It's a different way of working with kids, but many of them, I think we're at a point in our district where many teachers are actually infusing this work inside of the classroom, which is the best part of it.
It's great. It's just been wonderful to see how quickly that got implemented and how widely it's being taken up, so thank you.
Okay, so the superintendent's report continues with part three, so if Mr. Scott and our students would come on up. So it's Grace, Elizabeth, Chris, and Thomas?
Joe.
Joe.
First of all, on behalf of the entire SAM Forest School Newspaper-
Oh, Mr. Scott, you're going to have to speak into the microphone over there, I'm sorry, otherwise it doesn't get picked up on- and students, if you don't speak into the microphone, then we can't feature you as we want to feature you because we can't hear you on the tape.
Here we go. Again, thank you to everyone for inviting us to be here. It's a fantastic honor. Hopefully, over the course of the last two or three years, you've seen an article from the Forest Scout. It's all online at theforestscout.com and we produce four or five newspaper magazines each year. The four students in front of you today are all seniors who are in their second year in the journalism program. We have a staff of 50 students in two classes, but these four in particular are responsible for making the Forest Scout what it's become kind of in the past couple of years with its popularity amongst students and community members, faculty, and things like that. The coolest thing for me and the most rewarding thing for me about teaching these four students is that I had them all as underclassmen, recruited them to come write for the newspaper, and they believed- they believed me that we could make it something special, and then they've taken that work into something that they've really created, something that's going to last and something that has an influence in their community. I'm going to have each of them come up and talk about a particular article that they've written that they found particularly meaningful in the past two years. But another great thing is that most, if not all of them up here today are planning on studying journalism or at least minoring in it or pursuing it in some way in college, which is an awesome thing in a field that's kind of come under fire recently in the past couple of years, to have that and to have the great talent that these young students have as writers and as thinkers, to pursue a career in journalism is something that, again, reinforces why I love coming to Lake Forest to work every single day. Okay? So I'll start with Joe. Joe, come on up.
Once again, my name is Joe Thomas. I primarily for the Forest Scout, writing in between the lines section, which is the sports section. And last year, I mainly covered baseball. It's my favorite sport ever. And I started off writing for the Chicago Cubs, and that's where I really started to, you know, progress my writing skills, and they grew from there. I wrote recaps after every single game. I still have till 2:00 AM sometimes just writing for them, and it was a lot of fun because I'd get to watch the games, I'd get to keep box scores and take notes on them. And I really learned about the team and other teams in the major leagues as well. And in all of this, once I finally got down all my notes and everything, I put together an article, and really, I think that really kicked off so far what I've done in journalism as now a senior. After that, in the spring, I covered the baseball team, and then this year, what's been really fun for me was covering the football team. And especially Chris, I've written a lot about him in my articles and the previews and the recaps. Mr. interception. But yeah, so I've wrote a lot for them and I'll be continuing to write for them in the remaining two games and then hopefully a playoff game too. And yeah, it's been a lot of fun and it's really kind of helped me too because now I've applied now to 10 schools and every single one of them, I'm looking to go into journalism. And I've gotten into a couple already and I've been directly enrolled into their journalism program, which has been quite an honor. It's something I really want to do, and when I'm older, I really want to be involved in sports and, you know, whatever it may be, if it's journalism or if it's marketing or if it's management, having that writing skill is really going to help me and I'm going to look directly back to the Forest Scout is really helping me through it. And it's- all I can say is, I mean, from the start of the Forest Scout to now, we've really progressed as a group. We had a lot of great articles come out, not just from in between the lines, but from every category. There's a lot of talented people from the contributors, so it's been a lot of fun and I'm excited to see this grow over the course of the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Elizabeth Porter, and first of all, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Scott and all the administrators for being so supportive of the journalism program. Before I took journalism last year, I had no idea that it was something that I would potentially want to pursue in college and for the rest of my life, and now that's definitely a dream of mine. And I've written- I write about school issues and a lot of like op-ed, opinionated pieces. I've written a lot about the school board and I'm- yeah.[1365.53][1365.53](laughing) I don't know what to say about that. I was like, huh, do I talk about that? Thank you. So yeah, I hope that you read those, and that was such a great growing experience for me because I felt like I could have an impact on my community and change the way that people thought about things, which is such a simple idea, but the effect it had on me was so profound that like you're a 17-year-old kid, but you're speaking to thousands of adults. And, you know, I thought they're missing something and they don't get it and they don't understand, and then, you know, with my writing and my words, I could try to make them understand. And of course, people are always going to disagree with us, but just having the chance to have my voice heard has been so meaningful to me and it's been a great experience overall. So thank you, everyone, for supporting us.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Rumor has it that you are writing not just the one article that we all read on school funding, but this is going to be a series. Is that true?
Yes, that is the goal.
And can you give us a hint what the next one will be?
Um, the next one, I want to, if possible, go to North Chicago or talk to students from and teachers from North Chicago and sort of get a- like a real feel for what they struggle with day to day. So is it like, are they missing the technology that we have or, you know, their teachers? What are the differences there that are leading to the differences in test scores and the differences in college enrollment? So like where is that really coming from and what is life like there? And then after that, I also want to talk about the history of this, how's it gotten so bad, sort of the legislative side, and then eventually talk about the school funding bill shortcomings, you know, why it's necessary. And my overall goal is to get people from Lake Forest to look at this issue with compassion and to understand that it doesn't just affect us and it's not just about what's happening to our school, it's about, you know, the whole state. So that's my goal.
That's awesome. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Grace Scheider. This is my second year in the journalism program, as Mr. Scott said, and my second year acting as editor in chief for the newspaper magazine. And my kind of niche is opinion pieces or features, typically human interest. So last year, I had the opportunity at the end, I don't know if you saw it, to do our person of the year on ATN Naaman, who is now attending Indiana University. And something that I think is so cool about this journalism program is that it's so unlike any other typical high school English class in which like your writing is confined to you and your teacher and maybe your friends that you had look over your essay about whatever book you're reading then, you really have a chance to explore what you're interested in and to, as Elizabeth said, like find your passion, or like Joe, like really was able to explore sports writing and Elizabeth with community issues, which is so much more practical. And if you're looking at a career in journalism, that's what you're going to be doing. You're going to be finding your beat and finding your voice and how you're using your words to impact other people's lives. And like writing about Siddhartha or analyzing Macbeth is great, but that's not what you're going to be doing, you know, 10, 15 years down the road, whereas as 16, 17, 18-year-olds, we've been able to have a small look at what a career in journalism is like, and it's most definitely inspired me to want to continue to pursue a path in journalism over the next few years, and I'm just so grateful to have had this opportunity, to have a platform to write about what matters and to celebrate the wonderful school and the people who go there. So that's my piece.
I have a question for Grace too, sorry. So you wrote another beautiful piece that was really very emotionally stirring about going to the school, and it got a lot of responses from the community, and I was just curious, for you, but for all of you, what's that like when you see people post from the community? Elizabeth made reference to adults engaging with you. Has that been a positive experience or has that been a little freaky to have all those adults all of a sudden talking directly to you in the comments section?
I think it's actually been a really encouraging experience because you know that people are reading what you're writing and that it's most of the time, I hope, positively impacting those around us and, you know, calling to light the people we go to school with or, you know, people who maybe aren't the stars of the football team or, you know, student council president, like the people who don't usually get celebrated. And just being able to know that what we write matters has been a very cool experience. So.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Chris Cavalleres. So sophomore year, I was in Mr. Scott's English II class, and he was telling me about the journalism class and writing and journalism, and I never really enjoyed writing. I was never good at it, really. And he ended up, you know, talking to my mom and my mom somehow got me in the class without me knowing.[1702.11][1702.11](laughing) So that was great. So I showed up eighth period the first day. He made me write one article, it was probably terrible, and then I changed over to doing, you know, podcasts and video- audio and video editing. So a lot of, you know, the videos you guys see is me kind of behind the scenes editing those videos, and then we do a podcast called All Talk, No Shop, where we interview different people around the school and like different athletes. And one thing I've learned from that is, you know, getting people to kind of come out of their shell, get their guard down and like talking to them. You learn a lot from them, and I've gone from interviewing, you know, the best player on the football team to, you know, the student council or school old guy who, you know, doesn't get a whole lot of press. Scholastic Bowl, sorry. Another thing we also do is commons knowledge, and we walk around the school and we interview, you know, different students, and we ask them kind of questions for different categories around the school, around the curriculum, so like history, geography, and, you know, you get some really smart kids and you get some kids with not the best answers, but it's been a great experience so far and I'm excited to see, you know, where it takes me, and I'm looking to do, you know, broadcasting or video editing in college. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, I just wanted to commend you on what you've done with this program. One of our goals as a district is, you know, college and career readiness, and Dr. Holland mentioned it earlier with the open doors program. You have a hands-on open doors program every day that these kids really get to try out journalism and find, like whether you're Chris and you want to do the other side of it or- it, or, you know, you really want to write. You've really given them a fantastic opportunity to try out a skill. And from the flip side, being a parent, I love the insight I get into the school and just kind of interesting takes on everything. It's really been enlightening for me as well. So thank you so much for taking this on and for all of you for making what it is today.
So Joe and Elizabeth and Grace and Chris, thanks to each of you. Whether you, whether we're commenting in the comment box underneath your articles or not, one of the things that you can be confident in is that we read your stuff and we forward it to people. And around the world, literally. And so you're having a real impact. Chris, I want to make sure and encourage you, you're exploring a new type of journalism. The podcast is a cool place. And you came straight from football practice here, too, by the way. This is a multitasking guy here. But each of you, Joe, you picked like the best year ever to start in journalism and follow the Cubs. I mean, it's a sign of success there. But from all of us, board members may or may not recall, Mr. Scott was our distinguished educator last year. And he was one of eighteen candidates. And that was a very distinguished group of people that were nominated by students. And he happened to be the educator that was chosen. So for each of you, thanks for your contributions and thanks for your insights tonight. And Mr. Scott, keep up the good work. It's one of the coolest classroom visits I did last year was to drop in and watch you guys go through the, hey, what about, what about, what about, as you start to throw different ideas for articles out. And real positive atmosphere in there. It's sort of a yes and, reminds me of improv. Try to be positive as you look for things to write about. So very cool and really meaningful work for the school community and the community at large. Thank you. And I have one other part of the superintendent's report. Sometime around 10 o'clock, I'll be done. Yeah. So there's one other part of the superintendent's report. And see if I can get the AV mute come off. I'm going to begin. There are a number of questions on the bottom down here. And this is a poll of superintendents, but what's interesting about this is this mirrors the nation as a whole on what people value. So whether students are engaged in their classwork, the percentage of students who feel hopeful about their future, students who graduate from high school and so on, all the way over to the test scores, that kids get standardized test scores. What's most important as you send your kids to school? And the superintendent's answered this, but Gallup says, these are slides from Gallup, by the way. See, irrespective of which audience they talk to, whether it's educators, whether it's people on the street, students, parents, they get the same. Which one of these things you think is most highly rated, by the way? Number two?
Second one.
First one?
Second one.
Second one? So in poll after poll after poll, the level of engagement and feeling good about what you're doing and hopeful for the future is number one. Last on the list, every time, is standardized test scores. What's interesting about this is when you look at the conversation that you see in any form of comparative data on schools, how do people justify whether a school is good or not? Invariably, it's because the test scores are high that makes it a good school. It's actually the thing that people value the least when they send their kid off to school. Overwhelmingly, what people, parents want when they send their kids off to school are three things. They want them to want to go. They want them to have a meaningful connection to adults there and they want them to do things that they find meaningful. And these four kids with Mr. Scott are just a prime example of what people hope for when they send their kids off to school. So the Gallup poll, our students are going to be doing this later on in the month. There are four key areas. Two of those are of greatest interest to us and that is the engagement, the level of enthusiasm that kids have for school and hope, the ideas and energy that kids have for the future. And Gallup has all kinds of data on why engagement in particular is really a big deal. These are the questions that our students will be asked. They're short and they are consistent from fifth grade to 12th grade. They work on a number of different grade levels. And there are some that, if you ask the number of administrators, which one do you think most is most important? They usually have a favorite among them. But these are the nine questions that Gallup says, these are the questions that matter. Interestingly, when they poll adults at work, the nine questions are almost identical. They're very, very similar to this because we're all just big kids, no matter where we happen to go to learn and work. So one of the things that is a benefit of the Gallup polling is it takes very little time to take it. And then I think we will have some compelling results from this. The engagement is something that the Gallup researchers talk a lot about. The critical year is the biggest drop from one year to the next is in sixth grade to seventh grade. We're also doing the same polling in District 67. But this decline, while they say, look, it's not going to be a steady all the way across, you can affect, you can have an impact on the level of engagement and motivation to come to school. And they're very committed to that. And this is something that when we send our kids off to school, their level of engagement matters to us. The degree to which they have at least one teacher question, number nine, I have at least one teacher who makes me excited about the future. When kids don't answer affirmatively to that question, all of the other things that the student answers are really, really sobering because it's not just this part of the student's experience that's not working for them. It's a whole bunch of those. So I mentioned that Gallup does stuff with the private sector. They do things with private sector as well as the public sector. And one of their areas of focus, there's a separate poll that they do, it's called Strength Finders. We're going to be utilizing that in District 67. It's a longer survey. And we'll see what kind of results we get from that. But Gallup is committed to focusing on strengths rather than weaknesses that employees have. They say, you know, there's a long history, both in education and in privates, in the private sector, that trying to fix people, trying to get them to do things better that they are naturally not interested or bad at is not a fruitful activity. One of the things as it relates to our student profile work, that's important, that we got from our focus groups that we did with District 67, was there are certain parts of that that can be pretty sobering if your student is not thriving at school. What's good about Strength Finders is it identifies that every kid is good at something. Every adult is good at something. And good managers, going back to what they tell managers, find a way to reduce active disengagement, but they also find ways to leverage their strength. So they break kids down into, they break employees down into three groups. Those that are actively engaged, those that are somewhat engaged, and those that are actively disengaged. And these same sort of things fall out in student behaviors, too. There are some kids that's like they actually are coming, just like they're so discouraged that they're actively trying not to learn. And that's because, another word that Gallup uses, that's because they are thriving, surviving, or suffering. And those are the kinds of words they use. So when you go back to these questions, what you're looking for is obviously you want to have high levels of engagement and high levels of kids that feel good about coming to school and feel a strong connection to adults. So we're going to be doing that later on this month in both the high school and the elementary district. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Could I just make a comment? You know, well, I'll be very interested, I think we all will, to see how engaged our students are. A little bit nervous, too.
Right.
Because we may not like what we see.
Right.
But, you know, there is a difference between adults who have already fully developed and have areas of strength and areas that they've kind of given up on. But, and I totally get the idea of finding a student's strength and making sure they have the opportunity to exercise that. But when we have young brains, we have the opportunity to work on those areas so that they don't have to say, oh, I was never good at math, you know? So, you know, I just, this makes me a little bit worried that, you know, we're just going to be staying on the sunny side of the street and not trying to educate the whole child, if you know what I mean. Do you want to comment on that?
Well, I would ask you, you're, for those of you that don't know, Dr. Elliott is a neuroscientist. If there's anybody watching, I'd be interested in your thoughts on how the brain does develop from fifth grade to 12th grade and how we should be looking at those results with.
Well, it's just, you know, there was a fad for a while there of learning styles and having every child do a survey to figure out, what is your learning style? Are you an auditory or a visual? And I just worry about kids labeling themselves, slotting themselves, I'm good at this, I'm not good at that. And it's quite different when you're working with an adult workforce and you're trying to bring out the strengths in them versus a student who we still hope will learn across the academic spectrum, especially in high school. I mean, they're not, in college, they're not majoring in something. We want everybody to, you know, learn a foreign language and stick with math and writing and reading. And so, you know, I just, as you said, this is a snapshot, but, you know, I hope we don't get too caught up in just, and it's, of course, it's important for kids to be happy at school and connected. There's no question about that. But there's more to it than that, too.
Yeah, one of the things that Gallup talks about is that they have determined that their survey instruments are valid and reliable down to fifth grade. They don't go lower than that. And then one of the things they're also, they talk about is, look, kids grow, they develop, they change. And so what is, what looks, it looks one way in fifth grade sometimes and a different way in seventh grade. So they develop other areas of interest and begin to develop other strengths. It's just not just this one thing that they label themselves in fifth grade and it stays with them. However, they also say, look, you know, we're human beings, we do have tendencies. And some of these tendencies do wind up persisting and it can wind up being, you know, hey, this is my area today, my area of interest. But our profile, our student profile, those, the data points on there will evolve with the kids as they take, as they retake these things every couple of years. The, there's another point that I think it will be, this is something that is new and different for us. And one of the, one of the things that Gallup was clear to emphasize is, look, your results on these things are your beginning. But you also follow up with focus groups. So if you have a bunch of kids that answered a certain way, it's now pull your, whether it's your social workers or your school psychs or whoever they are, assistant principals, pull groups of kids together and say, what were you thinking when you answered this? And then you dig down deeper into that.
You're going to take students' individual responses on these and analyze?
No, no, it does not. No, this, we get aggregated results. But what they're saying is take sample groups of students and say, okay, so from your sample group of students, what was going through? When you answered the question, the adults at my school care about me and you answered, you know, you answered X, why, what were you thinking when you did that? Particularly when you're, the result is something that really sticks out to them. Said it's not just one data point and boom, now you go make decisions. It's, that's one data point, focus groups you follow up with. And so it's sort of a mixed method study that they're suggesting on that, you know, just stop there.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
And this is just going back to the question around strengths. I know, and you can correct me totally if I'm wrong, but a lot of our work with Rush has been just around how students respond to their strengths. If we start with their assets and where they're strong, and just thinking about teaching being an art. And if we start with kids and what they're familiar with, it decreases a lot of anxiety. They're more willing to engage. And I think the part of our challenge in our work as educators is to identify those strengths, but leverage them to teach them new things and to explore other areas that they might not be as familiar with. So it's starting with what might be familiar and then showing them other ways of doing the same thing so they can see the results. And that's a way of engaging them and learning new things. And I'm just thinking about multiple ways that that happens in the building. Not every, some kids are kinesthetic learners and they like to move and all of those things. Part of that is getting students to recognize that as well as teachers, but also thinking about different ways to, that all the kids in a space learn and figuring out ways to highlight those strengths while also teach them new ways of showing up around different materials. And I think the more ways that a kid can demonstrate their learning across their different learning styles or a different learning style, the more likely they are to be able to transfer that learning into different contexts. Whether it started as a strength or not, it no longer is unfamiliar to them and they can still use it in their best benefit and in a way that supports them.
Yeah, it reminds me of one of the guys I worked for one time when I was a newer teacher used to say, Mike, every time you change your assessment, you get a new set of kids who are your stars. And the example that we just had up here of, many of us have read Elizabeth's writing. She's an exceptionally strong writer of prose. And then Chris is expanding into podcasts. It's a different way to make a point and it's a new way to make a point. My boss's point was, look, the adults pick an assessment and frequently that assessment makes certain kids look like they are the strongest kids. You change how you are asking kids to interact with the material and you get a whole different set of kids in your class. You say, these are, these are my strongest kids, these kids grasped it the best. I think of the student that, when you ask kids to handwrite, handwrite an essay, you get one kind of production. You write on a computer, you get a different kind of production. You ask kids to sit down in front of a camera and speak, a different kind of production. And the question can be all the same question. And it can be a history, science, English, whatever, whatever kind of question. But those three different ways of representing your learning, you have three totally different levels of engagement and interaction with the material. So it's a really good point from Dr. Holland. And we will learn from this. We will learn about our school system, we'll learn about our kids. And then, of course, the most important thing that comes out of this is, all right, so this is the baseline, how do we get better? And those conversations then lead to some form of an action plan. And so I think, Dr. Elliott, I think you're exactly right. I think we may well find some things that make us cringe in this, but that doesn't mean it's not important to do. What I've been impressed with, with Gallup from the beginning, I've looked at this over many years and then finally decided we need to do this, is that it is simple, it is clear, and I believe it is actionable. And that's important. We have other data points that we have and it's a sea of data. I think this will be clear enough and compelling enough to us that it will move us to some action. And that's what I want.
Thanks. The assessment, students are going to be, how long?
This, this one is somewhere between 10 and 20 minutes because there's some other questions, you know, what grade are you in and, you know, things like that that take a little bit of time. But there are four sections with, I think, nine questions each. So they're, as you saw, they're boom, 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 question, answer. So, they're, as you saw, they're boom, boom, boom question, answer. Any other questions for Mike?
That's, as I recorded, the C and R. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
All right.
See, none. I'm going to move on to the reports, discussion reports section, but right now, there aren't any reports for this month. So, I'm going to move on to the administrative reports and the education committee meetings, please.
Um, yeah, we had our first meeting of the academic year on September 19th. And we met two new administrators. Patrick, Dr. Patrick Sessin, who is the new Director of Educational Services. He came from Highland Park and he'll be leading all of the educational services from curricular and extracurricular, taking on leadership of the college and career planning. We also met Anna Baramis, who's the Assistant Director of Special Ed. She comes to us from 18 years in Waukegan and then four years at the Lake County Special Ed District. And she'll be overseeing the testing and accommodations and coordination with our feeder schools. And I should add that both of these new administrative positions, they're not additional positions. There was just some shuffling among the administrative staff titles and so on. So, not to worry that we're bloating the administrative staff. And then, Dr. Holland presented on the strategic plan, which we heard about at the board meeting last month. Her four goals, guaranteed and viable curriculum, all students are college and career ready, increasing participation in extracurriculars and our focus of, we discussed particularly for those students. We have a lot of students who are involved in many, many activities, but we're interested in identifying the ones who are less engaged, apropos to the kind of thing you're looking at with Gallup. And so, we talked about the efforts that will be made to get more students involved. And then, the fourth goal has to do with the social emotional learning. And again, we discussed this last month. And Dr. Holland also, we're running out of time, but she briefly updated us on where the personal learning profile development is going. This is this electronic dashboard that's going to be presenting not just test scores and grades, but also allows students and their counselors and their parents to keep track of extracurriculars and service involvement, career exploration. So, it's going to be a great tool. I guess at this point, it's working sort of at the level of aggregate data so we can get a picture of the student body. And then, eventually, I guess it'll be next academic year when it'll be rolled out for individual students and other stakeholders. And then, I just wanted to add that we added a, an extra meeting to the education committee's schedule for October 31st, our Halloween edition, at 7:30 in the morning, like all our meetings, because Dr. Holland would like to discuss the implementation of dual credit courses, which are courses that allow students to get both high school and college credit by partnering with nearby schools. So, if anybody would like to hear about that, it's October 31st.
Is that, is the dashboard, personal dashboard, do you think, will they be ready next year? As you stated, is that, is that on target right now or is that a likely or a 50/50?
It is on target. We are being very mindful of a rollout, just thinking about who needs what access, needs access to different information. Right now, we're, we are looking at it as a district tool. Eventually, we'll roll it out to different core teams. But, we plan to communicate that, that rollout plan once we're final, once we finalize the data that's in there. Right now, we have our tiles built and we're working with ECR to run several models just to make sure everything's running. We're looking at adding two additional tiles that speak to the different types of academic support that students access, as well as determining whether we want any information about social emotional learning on there. So, of course, we're going to, we're going to roll it out, but we're also looking at ways to make it most, the most useful for different groups. But, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Lisa, is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you. The next committed report is mine, Finance and Ops Committee. We did not meet, so there is no report, but I wanted to remind everybody that there is, the next Finance Ops meeting will be November 10th. Jen and I will be meeting prior to prepare for that. And I will be talking to the different Finance Committee members prior to, to abridge them of what's going on and make sure that we gather in feedback. And I'm also happy to announce that we're extending the meeting duration by a half an hour to try to allow for more time if we need it.
Ms. Lane, could I jump in for just a moment? One of the things that
Please do.
is sort of a standing item is a status report on where we are on the finances. And Jen, I wanted to give you a moment to step in and say, "Where, where are we this month relative to expectations?"
Well, as you know, it's really early in the school year, but we do have exciting news on the revenue part. Contrary to what we usually provide in the update, we actually have good news on the state revenue funding portion. When we completed the budget, when we did the budget update and approved it in September, a lot of the questions that I received were, "What is going to be the impact of the new funding model? What do we expect to receive and when, when should we receive it?" And I'm happy to note that we've really started to see some payments come through. So, provided in written form in your packet tonight, you will see that we're anticipating receiving up to $400,000 more in state revenue this year. Not that we're actually getting more in total, it's just that we're actually getting the money that was owed. And we're also getting our current year money in a more timely fashion. So, that's really exciting news. As you know, we were very conservative in our, in our budget, but pleased to see that those payments have started to arrive and optimistic that they'll remain maybe in a, in a same timely fashion going forward. So, that is the biggest update and impact for this month.
Great. That's good. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, so moving on to the Policy Committee, Diana will be speaking on behalf of the Policy Committee as well as covering some activities for the Foundation, APT and Boosters. Diana?
Thank you, Mr. Lane. On September 26th, the Policy Committee met and we reviewed and discussed a lot of different policies. So, I thought it would be nice to share with everybody who didn't attend our policy meeting what was covered so that when we get to the consent agenda, you know the thought that went into a lot of things. The first ones that we reviewed were basically footnote updates that press gives us. So, for the following policies, uniform grievance procedures, teaching about controversial issues, instructional materials and accommodating individuals with disabilities. We just approved them based on the footnotes that press gave us. So, those were not major changes at all. We did remove from the policy manual a policy called Orders to Forgo Life-Sustaining Treatments. And we really didn't want to put this burden on the staff. And it was basically a very interesting policy that we all felt very strongly about and agreed to take that off of our teacher and our administrator's shoulders. And Dr. Numicus was very helpful in letting us know that this was like, kind of a crazy thing to even have as a school policy. So, very lucky to have him on our committee to share that with us. We also look at policies that we haven't looked at in the past five years. And the following were removed because they restated laws that we were going to follow regardless because there's laws. And that was organizational board of education meetings, resource conservation, panemdemic preparedness and recognition for service. And the last ones we followed, the last ones we reviewed and approved were release time for religious instructions and observance, court duties, student appearance, solicitations, buy-in from the staff, professional development and evaluation of educational support personnel. So, they, we looked them over, we felt like they were all on track and so we approved them as they were. And then, the very last thing we talked about in our discussions were not to approve the remote education programming, and that is something that we will, Mr. Simic talked about, maybe talking about it a much later date, but nothing that was on the table for our district at this time. Another one of my jobs on the board is to attend all of our other meetings that go on in the community. So, I got to go to the Foundation meeting and I'm, just a couple of brief notes from that meeting. It was on September 20th, it was their kickoff meeting of the year. And currently to date, the Foundation, which is the fundraising aspect of the high school that provides money for educational technology, those kind of programs. They have 345 families who have registered already, which is 20% of the Lake Forest families. And they're hoping to get to 40 families, so they're off to a great start. They updated their logo and tagline and they're trying to make it more streamlined and more catching. So, their new tagline is "Investing in Educational Excellence." And they're working on T-shirts and hats and all sorts of fun things to help spread the news about that. November's Foundation Month and they're going to be soliciting for more members and for donations. And they have a lot of things on the calendar, so you'll be seeing a lot of information from them, from Potbelly's to Denati's to Chipotle, J. Crew, Gifted, J. Levels. Oh, J. Levels was really cool. They're doing Thanksgiving pies. And the proceeds go, if you order a pie through J. Levels for Thanksgiving, the proceeds go to the Foundation. So, that's kind of cool. Lastly, their spring luncheon day is set, so if you want to mark your calendar for Wednesday, April 18th, it will be at X-More Country Club. So, that was really a very interesting meeting. Then on October 4th, I went to the APT meeting. Couple of highlights from that fun meeting, the directory is now available online so you can look up and call all of your friends. The hard copy will arrive soon. Jim Sullivan gave a really nice report on the Open Doors program, which we've talked about, which is coming up the 2nd and the 3rd of November, with the preview on October 8th and registration on the 15th. And they are still looking for businesses to host students and give them that wonderful experience like we saw with the journalism education or journalism class. So, that was a really interesting presentation. I also attend the Boosters meeting and on September 18th, we approved a couple of things there. We give varsity team grants. And so, the football team and the field hockey team came in and they were awarded $1,000 grants to help them with expenses to go to tournaments and competitions that they went to over the summer. The Booster Bash, they set their date for that. That's Saturday, March 10th at the Gorton Center. And they're going to be doing Live from Lake Forest again, which is a comedy act. And they will have silent and live auctions. They do a wonderful thing called Summer Camp Grants. And 82 kids of our students participated in that. And they get $100 grant to offset a summer camp they attended this summer. They have to apply, they go to an interview, they attend the camp and then they write a letter about what they did and what they learned at that camp. And then, the Boosters gives them $100 for their efforts. Fall sports are wrapping up and winter sports are getting ready for tryouts. So, it's a lot going on from a parent group perspective at the high school.
That is fant, or, sorry. That is fantastic. You, you were able to work a lot of things into that Policy Committee report. Congratulations.
Policy is multifaceted.
It really is, it really is, it's never ending. I also wanted to mention in terms of sports, there is the Cross Country Conference Championship at Lake Forest College this weekend, too. So, the scouts are well represented in many, many avenues.
Sorry, I missed that one.
It's okay, it's all good. So, now, we're going to move on to the Liaison Reports and we move to EdRed, Sally Davis.
School funding. Hey, let's talk about school funding. So, on last Friday, October 6th, Mr. Simic and I attended the EdRed Fall Kickoff Meeting. And I'll just give you the highlights and Ann Whipple, I promise I'll send you the notes. There were three big topics that were covered. The first one is only going to be a vocabulary lesson for people like me who didn't know as much about it as we should, and that was in relation to the effect of the tax increment financing or infamous TIF districts on school funding. Just as a, so we're all on the same page, it's a subsidy for redevelopment. It's a diversion of property taxes in order to pay for that redevelopment. It is not a huge issue in Lake Forest. We only have one TIF district, it doesn't really affect our revenues. It is a huge issue in Cook County. As a result, one of the things that came out of the school funding reform was that they put together a TIF Reform Task Force, which will not be hugely important to us, but was hugely important to other EdRed members that were there. The one takeaway that I did have from it was because TIF, in effect, diverts money away from the property, property tax-based way of funding schools in the state of Illinois, it does tend to spread the pain outside of the TIF district itself. So, even if you are not a TIF district, you are in effect lowering the amount of revenue that's being paid for the schools and that tends to have to be made up by GSA dollars. The, there were several panelists who spoke, but Senator Dan McConkey, who is a state senator in the 26th District, which is the western suburbs, Lake Zurich is sort of his base, and one of the sponsors of the Senate Bill 1947, which was a school funding bill, did speak more about it. And I want to talk about a couple of things that came up on his watch because I think that they were interesting. As you'll recall, the name of the bill is the Evidence-Based Funding for Student Success Act. And the, the two topics that were discussed, one was the voter referendum provision, which enables voters to put on the ballot referendum to reduce the amount of taxes that are levied for school funding. There were a lot of very pointed questions from members of the EdRed audience. And to be honest, I think that Senator McConkey felt a little attacked. It was interesting because he said two things that I think were reflective of how the state legislator, legislature decided to put this provision in play. And he said, "I don't want to hear about property tax complaints every day because I can't affect them. That is the number one call that comes into my office and the people of Illinois don't understand that we can't do anything about that." And so, the whole point in voter referendum is to turn the taxpayer's attention back to the local entities that assess and levy their taxes. It was a little bit defensive, but what was interesting is he said, "Having said all that, I recognize that the state creates these cost drivers that get pushed into property tax because we inadequately fund education." And he named some others examples that aren't relevant necessarily to our school district. But, he did recognize that because the state doesn't adequately fund it, it pushes burdens onto state tax, onto property taxes. And so, they were kind of saying, "So, good luck with, you know, taking that up with your local, your local school boards." The second thing that came up was the fact that now that we are in the implementation mode of the, of the state funding bill, ISBE, the Board of Education, is now going to be assigning districts their adequacy numbers under the evidence-based funding model. And that will be by June 30th of next year. Each school district will be assigned an adequacy number that says how much money they should be getting from state aid. What was interesting about it is that one of the creators of the evidence-based funding model was there and he took the opportunity to not only educate the EdRed folks, but also to talk very bluntly to Senator McConkey about the pluses and minuses of how that evidence-based funding model has been implemented by the legislature. And I think that will be highly relevant to District 115. He said to Senator McConkey, "I am worried that you are calling this evidence-based funding model is that it will assign a number, an adequacy number, that is what it will cost to provide an education in a particular district." And he said, "That is not what this is a measure of." And he said, "Understand the difference between adequacy, which is what this number is, and excellence, which is what you have to do when you look at the overall cost." So, adequacy, which is the only thing evidence-based is supposed to do, is to talk about how much of the GSA funding is supposed to go to a particular district. Recognizing that GSA funding is only one way in which school districts are funded and it is not inclusive of all of the things that contribute to excellence. And he said, "Do be clear, this model does not tell you what it takes to provide excellence in education." Things like, that are not considered, and I'm going to repeat them because they're going to be important, class sizes under 25 students, one-to-one instruction technology, extended and gifted education, vocational education, especially extensive career-oriented programs, dual-credit course offerings, which the Education Committee just discussed, robust co-curricular and student activities, and additional services for at-risk students. So, what I want us to all be paying attention to, of course, first, and I know that our administrative staff, particularly Jen Hermes, will be looking very carefully at how ISB does the number of what our adequacy target is. But, what I want us to pay attention to is that the adequacy target is not the same thing as what it costs to provide excellence in education. So, at the end, he offered, the fellow who was part of the evidence-based funding model group, he did offer to come up with a new way for the state legislature to describe the model and I don't know if he was taken up on his offer or not. But, that was, it was a very interesting meeting. Thanks.
Wow. That's interesting. The Senator McConkey was, was he referencing unfunded mandates when he said that?
Not, uh-uh. No. The way this is going to play out is that the state's going to give us a number. They're going to say that this is your adequacy number and it reflects just a slice. That is what our piece of the GSA is what our piece of the GSA pie should be, both in terms of existing dollars, as well as the new education funding, which is being allocated to the neediest. But it doesn't take into account all the other things that you pay for. What the EdRed Committee members are worried about, and what we will have to be careful to communicate accurately, is that ISBE number is not the same as what we know it costs to educate our kids here, and we don't want to get caught in a whipsaw about that. It was a very nuanced discussion, and I think he frankly, and I don't know, Mr. Simic, if you had that experience, I felt sorry for him, because I think he worked very hard on a very complicated bill, and I think he didn't think he was going to get so much pushback. But we're going to see a lot of discussion around this area going forward.
Yeah, there's very concerted pushback from high school superintendents in particular that are concerned that the adequacy number means this is all you need as a base. And that's not, their, their point is, that's not how this was conceived, and to market it that way does both the evidence-based formula a disservice and also puts districts in a, in a very defensive position unnecessarily for them. And the, the, the superintendent's are very supportive of the evidence-based model of the Vision 2020, out of which this grew. I mean, this was a, this legislative session this past year was probably the most consequential session of maybe even our lifetime, frankly, for public education in the state of Illinois. It was a monumental year for public education. But that evidence-based thing, that is going to be a recurring conversation. That one is not going to stop for two reasons. One, because of the concern about how it's going to be used, and it's almost like this is going to become a cudgel. And the other one, it's now slipped my mind how the other way it's going to be used, but there's another, there's another reason it's going to continue as well. That'll come to me as soon as I stop talking.
You did say cudgel, though. That's good. We will, we do not have, we do not have an SSED report tonight, so now I think we'll move on to the action items. So I think the policy that Reese had started, I think, I, I think we'll do that, where we, we announce the motion, and then we, we, we see if there's a, somebody makes the motion in a second. We'll do the roll call after allowing for any commentary or questions. So with that, I want to move into the first action item. Approval of bid for tables and chairs for Testing Center in the amount of $36,059.24. May I have a motion to approve the bid for tables and chairs for Testing Center in the amount of $36,059.24?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approved the bid for tables and chairs for Testing Center in the amount of $36,059.24.
Second.
Great, thank you. Is there any commentary or questions on this? We spoke about it at the last meeting, so I'd be surprised if there was. With that, can we have a, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Moving on, approval of bid for two transition vans in the amount of $53,660. May I have a motion to approve the bid for two transition vans in the amount of $53,660?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approved the bid for two transition vans in the amount of $53,660.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or commentary on this? All right, seeing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Approval of bid for tractor replacement in the amount of $43,863.61. May I have a motion to approve the bid for tractor replacement in the amount of $43,863.61?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approved the bid for tractor replacement in the amount of $43,863.61.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions on this?
Goes to tractor heaven. I don't know, what do we do with old tractors? Sell it for parts, I assume?
They put flowers around it and make it a decorative piece.
Has geraniums growing out of it?
They, they use it to fill the pond. It filled the pond. I hear you. Jen, do you know what?
We will actually do one of three things. We will either strip it for parts, we will either sell it for scrap metal, depending whether or not anything on there has a value, or we will try to sell it as is if somebody else has need for those parts, and we no longer have needs for those parts. But we will not be collecting, and I'm not a keeper. So it will not be like oat back with geraniums.
Okay, well, there you go. May, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Approval of Press Issue 95 First Reading. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Press Issue 95?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the first reading of Press Issue 95.
Second.
Great. Is there any commentary or questions? I think Diana covered the policy updates, so seeing no commentary, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Approval of Press Issue 94, 94, Five-Year Policy Updates First Reading. May I have a motion to approve the first reading of Press Issue 94, Five-Year Policy Updates?
I approve of Press Issue 94, Five-Year Policy Updates First Reading. Oops, sorry, I read the wrong thing. I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approved the, approved the first reading of Press Issue 94, Five-Year Policy Updates.
Second.
Great. May I have a roll call vote?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
And Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Approval of Human Resources Report, may I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Second.
Any questions or commentary? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for August 2017? Approval of release of executive session minutes, March 13, 2017, to July 10, 2017? Minutes of a regular meeting, September 11, 2017? Minutes of an executive session, September 11, 2017? Minutes of a budget hearing, September 11, 2017? Minutes of a joint board workshop executive session, September 12, 2017? Disposal of audio recordings, September 8 and October 13, 2015?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented by Mr. Lane.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mrs. Kryling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Foya requests, we have four from Debbie Dent, resident, status complete; Nancy Thorner, resident, status complete; Mitch Dudak, commercial, status complete; Bonnie Caff, non-resident, status complete. That was three requests. Furthermore, under announcements, Thursday, November 2, 2017, our parent-teacher conferences. Friday, November 3, 2017, there will be no school. And Monday, November 6, 2017, will be the next Board of Education meeting, right here at 7:00 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a voice vote, please?
Aye.
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 All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.